Um, they did.
Did they?
It should have been either separate or not.
Oh.
It's just like one, it's just basically this.
Cause I didn't bring my, I.
Yeah, I was, I was basically just this, so I guess it wasn't a packet.
Yeah, the packet would have all the details. The minutes of stuff that we need to approve.
So if we. We didn't get a copy of the minutes, we can't approve them tonight.
Okay. Good. All right, it's time to call to order the August eighth, twenty twenty-three Roy City Planning Commission meeting. Uh, we'd like to start with a pledge. I've asked Commissioner Tanner if you'd lead us. All rise.
Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to excuse Commissioner Calley, who might join us shortly, but we'll move forward until he gets here. Uh, we'll move on to agenda item number one, declaration of conflicts. I believe we've got a. Is there any commissioners who have a conflict with any of the agenda items tonight?
No.
Okay. Agenda item number two, I think we need to table these because we, two, three, and four. We don't have the contents of that packet at the moment, so we'll need to table that until the next meeting. Uh, moving on to agenda, item number five, legislative item.
Get a motion.
Let's get a motion.
Oh, motion. Pardon me.
I'll motion to table agenda items two, three, and four.
We have a motion to table agenda items two, three, and four. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's been passed, we'll table that until the next meeting. Uh, agenda item number five, uh, to consider amending the zoning map from RE twenty residential, residential estates to CC community commercial for properties located at approximately fifty-eight twenty-three south, fifty-eight thirty-nine south, fifty-eight fifty-nine south, and fifty-eight sixty-seven south, and fifty-eight ninety-one south thirty-five hundred west. Do we have the applicant here?
Applicants.
Applicants.
Applicants plural, I guess. If they're here, can they please come forward and take the podium? What we'll try to do before we hear from the applicant, um, when we open the meeting to the public, we ask that you keep your comments brief, preferably under three minutes. If a comment has been made that's similar to the one you would like to make, just approach the podium and express that you agree with a previous comment, and we can go with that way. Go ahead and turn the floor over to the applicant. Thank you.
Well, like we was here last month when we come to do it, it was.
Can we have your, pardon me, can, can we give you, give us your name and your address, please?
Tim Oliver.
Okay.
Uh, fifty-eight fifty-nine south thirty-five hundred west.
Thank you.
And since like last time we come here, three more of the property owners wanted to join in on that.
Okay.
So we, they tabled it to come this month, but I mean, I mean, what I'm, my purpose of doing it is, as of the growth is down here, I know that you guys in, on your master plan voted to have that zone commercial, and seeing what they've done in Davis County and what's going on between us, we just figured that we might as well stay ahead of it and go ahead and rezone now. Uh, and that's kind of what our thought is, so, okay.
Yeah, that is the same thing with me.
Sir, can I get your, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, just for the record, we.
That's all right. My name is Jim Williams. I'm at fifty-eight sixty-seven, uh, south. Yeah, I'm sorry, but anyway, um, we just felt that there were people that had a desire to put it together with other, just other than ourselves, and we thought, well, why not just do it all together? And that's why we've done. One of the things that's got me really concerned as I more thought about it, we, uh, there's really some concern on my part about the safety, trying to get in and off of that area, and so I think that, uh, I think it needs to be, uh, that we should do, we should do this and go forward. Any questions that you have of me, I'm sorry, I'm kind of running vague, but it, uh, I just, I just can't understand why not, since the state, the county, and the city have made it, uh, made it possible, or have already voted to make it, uh, a commercial unit, and so why not get it started? That's where I come from. But I am concerned about, I don't know how many times we've had, uh, people have accidents on that road, and so I, I just think that it, that's where it needs to be, okay?
Okay.
I'm Kathy Opperman. I live at fifty-eight ninety-one south thirty-five hundred west, and I just feel it's very, would be to my benefit to go along with what the other people are doing, and that's what I think would be a good move for all of us.
Thank you. Okay, Steve?
Technical issues.
Working through some, here we go.
Well, now you get a little oingo boingo going on. Nope, not that. There we go. Okay, as mentioned, this is, um, request to rezone some properties there on thirty-five hundred west. Last month it was just three, uh, then we had a few that got up and requested that they be a part of it. Um, the applicants had agreed to allow that, knowing that it would just extend it. Uh, so we re-notified, republished it, um, for the, these properties, so it's fifty-eight twenty-three, fifty-eight thirty-nine, fifty-eight fifty-nine, fifty-eight sixty-seven, fifty-eight ninety-one, um, all on thirty-five hundred west. Um, so here's kind of a, an aerial map of that. Uh, there's two properties to the south that, uh, are gonna, they're not part of this, and they're just, they'll remain, and then just south of that is where you have the, kind of the corner commercial complex. Um, from a future land use map, um, as you know, our general plan was just adopted in February, uh, that we've been working on for many years, and within that, the future last, land use map had this area to be commercial. So that's kind of where the ci, the city, uh, feels that, you know, we want to go to, or, or go become in this area. So these properties are just in accordance with the future land use map, but, um, the zoning map has it as RE twenty, which is again, single-family residential estates. So that's why they're just requesting a rezone request for these properties. So staff would recommend approval based on the future land use map and general plan, uh, with it being in accordance with that.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioners, we heard a little bit about this last month. Are there any additional questions or comments? Discussion? Okay.
Take a motion to go into public hearing.
Have a motion to go into public hearing? Do we have a second?
A second, that.
We have a second. We don't need a roll call vote to open the public hearing, do we? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the floor to the public. Again, please, when you approach the podium, give us your name and address, and keep your comments down to three minutes if you could, please.
Uh, Byron Burnett, I live at forty-three seventy-five south twenty-six seventy-five west, and you'd say, well, what's the problem with you? You're not even near the place. I, I was concerned that no other, um, members of our community came forward when we had issues behind our home, and I'm not convinced that's over. Until the building's done, I live there where they've approved townhomes behind me that are a little taller than we thought we had agreed on as a, as a community, but not serious, and the, and the whole, um, station district ended up a pretty good compromise, took care of the state. There was a nice compromise with, uh, the central part and the south and the north, but that was all done at the city council. Uh, when we brought issues here, time and time again, matter of fact, time, time again, they told me I had light industrial behind my house, and I didn't. I had the same thing these guys are. I had res, I had a state residential estate, and they kept telling the commission I had something different, and the commission, I finally got that straightened out, that hey, at least the commission knows what I really got behind my house, and what I was moving from. They, at one time, the commission sent forward to the city council with the approval of, of the department to do four or five-story apartments below me, three-story apartments be, above me, the trains behind my home, and make a sound barrier, and they didn't listen to anything we said. So I just want to encourage the, uh, people down here to, to say, and give you some feedback and hope that the commission will listen a little bit better, and I still worry behind my house, I'll be honest, because it looks like one of your members that never did listen and never, um, supportive of what we had to say is now gonna very easily maybe be a city councilman, and he may be there just, just because there hasn't been the kind of support you guys want at the city council. One of the things that, uh, I wanted to say, I heard in the couple of minutes, something about the businesses at the district, or the stations, uh, central district, about the same type of businesses. So I hope it's not mixed use. I hope you're talking about this community, uh, um, instead of mixed use, and the buildings are only going to be forty feet high instead of sixty, so I hope that's the case. I have the same issue with this gentleman of safety, and, and putting businesses in there, depending on what they are, are going to increase traffic, depending on what they are, which could cause even more traffic issues. That's one of the big arguments you get, it depends on the business. So, one of my, um, recommendations is because of lights, noise, uh, traffic, you don't know what's going in there. And I appreciate these people, but I, I'd want to do that too, for two reasons. First of all, if I had, um, that land changed to commercial, it sells for more. Commercial land, all of a sudden boom goes up, because it's easier for developers to come in with a zoning that they, all they have to do is meet the zoning requirements. They don't have to come to you, except for, uh, uh, site plans and stuff. They never have to go to the city council, and I think that's good for you guys, you want to control that. So if it changes now, there's no more input. Doesn't matter what businesses, the only, if it qualifies for that neighborhood business or whatever it is, there's no more talk about it. As long as it qualifies, it's in. That's what happened behind my house. We didn't talk about it anymore, because it came back with a little higher uh, levels of the homes because of the way we measured homes, and the, and the con, and the conversation was over. That's what this is going to be. If you approve this, it ends it. And any developer can come in and meet that criteria, and if they put too many lights over the neighbor's house, or too much noise, or bring in too much traffic, it's, um, the public has no more say into it, and I think in the future, this is going to happen in the future, there's no doubt about it. It's in the plan, the people want it. Might be the best place for, uh, might be better once they widen the road before that goes in. But it's gonna, probably will be a place, but I think it'd be a good idea for the public to have an idea of what's going in there, not just a general um, zoning change without no direction in the future. So they have a say.
Sir, you're three minutes.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you.
I'll just say this, that's my experience with the planning commission. I was here by myself one time. Thought of something else to say real quick, they wouldn't let me.
Okay.
So I, I, uh, I, I haven't had a good history with the planning commission.
Well, let's go over a little bit more, so.
You, a couple of you guys.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm Cindy Meek. I'm at fifty-seven ninety-two south thirty-six hundred west, and, uh, I'm below these, um, on Midland Drive, so my backyard would meet the end of this. So I'm like him, I'm, I didn't make it to the last meeting, but I'm wondering what kind of businesses there again, are, is a great big light going to be in there shining right into my home? Is there going to be barrier walls put up? Is there another meeting before anything goes farther, or once it's rezoned, is that the end? So I, you know, I'm glad I came and listened to this, because those are ideas I hadn't thought of either, but that's where I am, it's at the end there, and so that's just my question, maybe if you can answer those, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor to close the public meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Steve, do you have a, I have a couple of questions put forth, you want to take?
First, Ryan will not be here.
Okay, good to know.
Um, it was talked about, you know, traffic issues, recommendations, lights, noise. The city is, the, the city, as in you and the council, have, have gone to great lengths to protect residents from commercial, so there'll be no lights flooding into the, the people's backyards. They have to have a zero-foot candle. Um, they do have to put up some sort of barrier, whether it be vinyl fence or a concrete wall. Again, it's up to the developer, but either one, you know, six feet tall. The developer does have a choice to do eight feet if they desire. Residential can't do an eight feet, but commercial can. Um, the council left to the developer to figure out. Noise-wise, um, it, it probably won't be any more noisier than what's existing there on the corner now, uh, where that dentist office and stuff are at on the northwest corner, uh, because that's currently commercial, that's currently kind of the same developments that can occur here. It, it's hard to say, in order for you to come in with a rezone request, you have to know exactly what's coming business-wise. Just from a financial aspect, that's an enormous amount of money that would never be able to, to come to fruition, because you don't know what's going to come, because no businesses are looking for properties until they know it's commercial. Um, so it's hard to, to do that, and the state doesn't require it, nor do we, to have what's coming. Now, with it being thirty-five hundred west, UDOT does have control of access on to thirty-five hundred west. They will probably relish the fact that these will come commercial, because then they can limit it to one access point, which will help everybody get in and out and traffic flow, uh, versus, you know, six to eight different driveways that people can turn into and turn out of, so there'd be one. So if the other side of the street develops as well, you probably have one is, you know, one connected to it, and if it's far enough away, it could be light, but those aren't things you, you know, you know until after things are developed. So, to make that a requirement, it, it just, it would never happen. So what type of businesses, um, it's kind of hard without the, the ordinance with me, but it's usually, you know, dentist offices can come, um, anything, community commercial, right now, you've got Winco, I don't see a Winco coming right across the street or an Albertson's or anything, because you got, Kent's is just up the street, you got Weineger's up the street from that, and those are, you know, things that can be within community commercial. Mom and pop shops, hair salons, um, restaurants, you know, those, those type of things. And again, as, as I mentioned, the, the ordinance does require that they protect the residents as much as possible. Um, you know, there, there will be a little bit more noise than there was with residents, but that, that comes with kind of the territory, but it won't be exorbitant like, you know, all of a sudden you have thousands and thousands of, of cars coming there, but you kind of hope sometimes. Um, the general plan does call it for community, your commercial slash mixed use, but there is no mixed-use ordinance for that type of commercial. It's only downtown and front-runner, so there's, there's nothing written, so we'd have to write that if, if that's where, where it goes. So right now, the ordinance only allows for a forty-foot height of building. Um, how it was measured went through the council, that changed how things were measured, um, so that will go, go through, so it'd be forty feet. Um, most commercial businesses rarely put pitched roofs unless they're smaller, single-story. Unless the ordinance changed allowing for taller, that would come at the time of that ordinance change. Uh, but then again, even if it took on the same mixed-use ordinance as we have for downtown and the front-runner, there's still a lot of protections for those residentials, that the building won't be forty feet right at their property line. There have to be a, a setback of twenty-five feet, then it can go up to thirty-five feet, then it has to have another setback before it can go taller. Um, where that could be better than the existing community commercial, where after thirty feet, you can go forty feet tall, so. In some aspects, it's better that way versus, you know, versus just traditional commercial, so I think I got everybody's.
I think there was the last question of this, is, is this the last say on when that will change? I think it'll have to go through council after this.
Well, yeah, it depends. I mean, if you guys recommend approval, then it goes to the council. If you recommend to, to table it for further discussion, then there could be another meeting here, so it's hard to say.
Right.
I'm not sure how big the agenda is for council next week, because they didn't have a meeting August first, um, for, because of Roy days. So it may have to be on the September first meeting, so, but I'll talk with, uh, Matt Andrews tonight and see if it's able to go on it or not.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, commissioners, do we have a motion?
I think for just clarification, um, this is just the residents coming and saying, yes, we want to zone. There's nothing in the plans, nothing in the works. No one's approached this. It's just because it is part of our future zoning, they're just saying, hey, let's just get ahead of it, as was commented, so, um, that's part of the difficulty of knowing what's going to go in there, is because we really haven't even got the first part done, and that's making sure that it's zoned for that type of application, so it's difficult to be able to answer some of those questions where we're really in the infancy of what could possibly happen with a property, so if it's the desire of them to change it that way for whatever benefit they have, that's certainly their prerogative. They can come and apply, and they have, they're applying to the city to have the zoning changed. But as far as what, they're just, you know, we don't know that.
There may be some misconception that a, a rezone has to be development-driven, where there's, requires a site plan to be in place for a rezone, and that is not the case. So.
Absolutely.
First of all, there was a comment about traffic. Thirty-five hundred is going to be widened, it's a state highway. We don't have any control over that as the planning commission. There's going to be traffic, whether we do this or we leave it as it is. So that is a non-starter, as far as I'm concerned. Secondly, this does comply with a lot of work that this body put in, and some expense that we paid. We had, we did a new master plan here.
April, you said, last few months, last year?
General plan. This year.
The general plan.
Yep, general plan.
And we had spent a long time at it, and we had hired consultants, and we had open meetings so that the public could come in and talk to us. We took in a lot of information. And as part of that, it was decided that one of the best things for Roy in the growth was to allow community commercial development in this area. These people are taking advantage of that. I think if that was the direction they were headed a few months ago, it's the direction that we're headed now.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve, uh,
Recommend.
We recommend. Recommend.
Recommend.
Approval.
Approval of the zoning change to, from residential RE-20 residential estates to CC community commercial for the properties listed in the application.
Okay, we have a motion, recommend approval. Do we have a second?
Interesting. I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. This'll be a roll-call vote. Steve?
Commissioner Spar?
Aye.
Commissioner Felth?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Tanner?
Aye.
Commissioner Holbert?
Aye.
Okay, we have an approval.
This item will go before the city council at the next available meeting.
Yeah, I'll try to get it on next week, if not, it's gonna be the first of September.
Okay. All right, moving on to agenda item number six, administrative items, a request for site plan and architectural approval for Jackson C Store, located at approximately forty-eight oh five South Nineteen Hundred West. Do we have the applicant here? Come on up, please, tell us your name, and tell us a little bit about the application.
Sure, my name is Matthew Anderson with Core Architecture. I'm representing the Jackson C Store. So basically, the extent of the project, so there is a gas station and a car wash and a little store. The car wash currently has an automatic car wash with two self-serve bays. So the two self-serve bays will be demolished, and that's to increase, to improve the circulation in the parking lot there. And it'll just be infilled with asphalt. And then on the back of the store, there will be a very small railing for ADA accessibility. And so that's pretty much the extent. There's a little bit of restriping for parking behind the store there.
Okay.
For brevity, that's pretty much it.
Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? I'm just curious, any reason why you're removing the, just from a curiosity standpoint?
It's for circulation. Yeah, so it's, on the side of the store, they have a drive-up window, and it cuts in pretty close to the car wash there.
Gotcha.
And so they believe that, yeah, when they remove those two bays, it'll improve the circulation there.
That's my favorite place to go do my hand wash, so.
Yeah, over at the street.
I'll go somewhere else, it's all right. But I understand, because I know that drive-up window gets a lot of business. I live in that neighborhood, it gets a lot of business.
It does.
And so it makes sense for them profitably to make it so that it's easier for people to get in and get out, so.
Yeah, I think so. Any other questions for me?
Thank you. Steve?
As mentioned, this is a site plan and architectural approval for the Jackson C Store at forty-eight oh five South Nineteen Hundred West. It's kind of on the southwest corner of forty-eight nineteen. Everybody knows where it's at, it's a staple kind of in that area and in the city. As you mentioned, this is mainly for circulation, because of the drive-up window is so successful. You got the canopy for the gas filling stations right there, you got people that are coming in and out. You know, there's more parking in the back than the front, so if you're in the back and someone's in the drive-up window, and someone's getting a car wash, and someone's getting gas, it's a choke point right there. So by removing it, they open up a lot more space for circulation to occur. They're not really changing the building much, other than just removing those two bays, so really you're just ending up with the automatic wash and then kind of their equipment room.
So a quick question I didn't think about, those two bays also had a vacuum station? Is the vacuum station gonna be removed also?
So that is-
I don't remember.
That's a very good question.
That's all part of the snag, too.
Yeah, so I know, so there is some equipment on that, on the east side of the self-serve bays. I know there's a, you know, air for your tires.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about the vacuum equipment, but the idea is to move the equipment that is there currently onto that new east wall, on the side of the automatic bay there. So I don't think it would be removed if it's there currently.
All right, thank you.
I probably erased it from the site plan as I was touching it up to make it a little easier to read.
I think it was actually between the two self-serve bays, for people to vacuum and throw out the trash. And so if they remove the bays, that leaves it as an island, which is, you know, when I've been over there, that's been part of the snag, is having people at the vacuum and-
Oh.
And that's why the question is, is that gonna be, I mean, it could probably-
It'll probably be removed if it's in between the two self-serves.
Yeah, so anyway.
I'll, when they come through for final, I'll make sure.
Okay.
But anyhow, I think it's good for them, understanding, you know, traffic issues and the success of the drive-up window and the success of the building to, or the business, to make it a little more accommodating for vehicles to come in and out and into their property. So staff would recommend approval for both site and architectural.
Okay, two motions. So this would be two motions, I think that's the question. So do we have a motion for site plan approval?
Make a motion to approve the site plan for the architectural approval for the Jackson C Store at forty-eight oh five South Nineteen Hundred West.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. This will, it's not a roll-call vote, so all in favor of the motion to approve site plan for Jackson C Store?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, do we have a motion now to approve, for approval for architectural for the Jackson C Store?
I make a motion, we approve the architectural approval for the Jackson C Store, located at approximately forty-eight oh five South Nineteen Hundred West.
Okay, we have a motion for approval for the architectural plan, we have a second.
So moved.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven, a request for conditional use for outdoor sales with site plan approval of a food truck area for Saco's Farm, located approximately sixty-fifty South Nineteen Hundred West. And we have the applicant, can you tell us your name and address?
I'm Brandy Powers, it's been a minute since I've been here. The address for Saco's is sixty-fifty South Nineteen Hundred West.
Thank you. So tell us a little bit about it.
Well, thanks for having me back, this was part of the extended business plan, and after a year of hell getting Saco's ready, and getting our feet wet with it, and redoing the whole place, we're ready to look at what's next, right? To make highest best use of the property. So highest best use would be if we could have an outdoor space, right? So our engineer has sent Hanson's out of Brigham, and has worked with you and someone else, I think your engineer. This speaks, I come up with a crazy passionate idea, and then I turn it over to some professionals. So this, what we would like to see is the other quarter acre of the land in use, staying true farm-to-table. So what we'd like is like a semi-permanent food truck for people to come teach how to cook the food. So you guys have, I'm sure, heard about our bacon bombs, right? Like, it's like the biggest thing in the city right now, in our world, right? The bacon bombs, having the bacon bomb machine here is awesome. So what would be nice is if I could sample bacon bombs. Well, I have no kitchen, right? And I do not want to do anything like addition-wise or whatever, so if we create a space that is commercial kitchen grade in a food truck, then we can have sampling of all of our own products. So it's creating the space of truly, again, farm-to-table, and making it be that we can sample the products that we already provide. So, but doing that is taking us a little bit of work to make outside, first of all, safe, right? Because I am not vested in this to not make it safe. So we want the north end to kind of be where you come, you enjoy your food-to-table. So that's what this is.
Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant?
There's probably lots of those.
When you say semi-permanent.
Well, so like one food truck would be mine, and then the second food truck, if you see, and, can you zoom in?
No.
You can? As you see, I'm trying for you. So I have the paper, but it's really small on the-
Wow, never mind, I lied.
Oh, you can zoom in, okay, so let me explain. So semi-permanent one would be this square, right? So it's kind of tucked up in there in the landscaping. Another one would be to actually be able to bring in other food trucks, that I don't have to mess with, right? Because on a day that we can't cook bacon bombs, we can bring in the taco truck, or whatever, you know? So bring in somebody to have the outdoor sales, and still have it be that the one's just kind of tucked in there, and then the other, or if I don't have the money right away to do our semi-permanent one, that we could pull in two at a time. So it's just a, it's just a way to create, again, the safe use of the space over on that side. So, because it's just a parking lot for my neighbors right now, I do nothing with it, so.
Well, the rectangles on the top, I'm assuming that's picnic tables?
Yeah, so let me explain. So since what they're doing, and you can't read it, I can read it off mine, but I know enough of that. So this would be the green space, right? So we have the green space, picnic tables, some sort of sheet coverage, semi-permanent, movable. This is what we had to have for great dishes, so it's just kind of like a little-
Retention pot.
Yeah, like a little, it's not huge. And then some sort of curving to contain it all. So that's the gist of all this. I think that's it, it's really just, it's really just the landscaping and then the spaces, and then we'll re-asphalt and redo the striped lines like we did on the north or the south side, just so that everybody's very clear of where to park. So, yeah, that's it. That's everything that's on here.
So I am curious about the parking, is the parking just on the, will it just be on the south side?
It'll be the existing parking lot, because, so what's there now is dirt, well, compacted dirt, right? So the, on the footage, if you, where it's looking different, so this is already your parking, you see the old stalls?
Right, yep.
So it'll still be the stalls, and it'll still be the stalls, so you'll be able to hold the capacity of two food trucks.
Okay.
So that's what the engineer did, is you'd still be able to hold the two, you know? Capacity of those stalls and these stalls. And the stalls will be cleaner, I just didn't want to pay for asphalt until we knew what we were going to do. Works out to be that the asphalt will go about to where the issue is anyway. There's gonna be a little bit of work, because it's so gnarly. If I'm gonna do it, it's gonna be right, so it's not draining into my building, so, right now.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, it's, right now it's draining right into the building, which, whatever, but it's fine. The roof collapsed, everything's great, the whole building's new, so whatever. At this point, let's just figure out the parking now, so, yeah. And it would help traffic flow, too, honestly, on that south side, because you guys know that grandfather side-in is not the best side for parking. But this would just allow people to get a little more clarity on that this is our space, too, and you can park over here and still enter our building and those kind of things, so. Yeah, it's still just, just the dream of making, teaching people, I have, I'm insane. It's a lot of work. And this is the farmer husband that's behind some of it.
We love the changes you made, it looks really great.
Thank you, thank you. And there's still, you know, beautification to come and stuff like that, but it was a lot. I mean, the roof collapsing the week of Christmas, I, well, anybody that really knows me, his wife knows me, kind of, and some of you that have come into the shop have seen, like, I've nearly died twice, and I've lost a hundred pounds. This is, this was not for the faint of heart. Like, this was the hardest thing I've ever done, and I can do a lot. I mean, it nearly destroyed us, like, this is, this has been hard, but I still believe in it, right? Like, it's such a dying thing, like, the passion is still there, the goal is still there. This was part of my SBA plan, when I took it to them originally, you know? And now it'll just be saving up enough to make this happen financially after the mess of what we've had. But again, it truly teaches people, like, nowhere else are you going to sample the cows that come from my folks' place, that went to Bingham's to get made, back to your bomb, right? And then to be able to provide them the samples of it, because right now we're just hung up on that, I can't do samples, you know, so, that's it.
Anything else from?
You need anything else?
Looks like we have another question.
I have a comment.
Yes, okay.
I remember, it's been a while since you've been here, but I remember the last time you were here, it was one of the best presentations we've ever had, regardless of whether a lawyer made it or not.
No, a lawyer didn't make it, just this crazy blonde.
Okay, which makes it even more impressive. I've been in your shop many times.
Thank you, thank you.
And love everything you've done with it. So I cannot imagine you not doing the right thing from here on out.
Well, I'm here for the long term, there's no, I mean, Saco's was for sale for five years. This is not something that you take lighthearted, right? Like, I'm here because, A, number one, I have a thirty-eight-year loan, thirty-nine-year loan attached to this thing. Plus, it's again, how do you serve the community and provide something that's true? Like, this is my family's future, like, farming is a big deal, and it's amazing the education that's happened. You know, like, we got held, or our crops were underwater last week, up in Boxelder, right? And to just to educate people how hard it is sometimes to get that pumpkin that everybody loves and pays great for, right, to your house. Like, it's, so it's still the same passion and desire, right? It's just about educating people, like, these are my kids working on the farm that are bringing it to your table. These are my parents' cattle that are bringing it to your table. Like, it's education to try and keep these small people here, right? So, thank you for saying.
I really appreciate that, I grew up farming as well, so I can appreciate what you're doing and the education part I really like.
I know, and you've said that before, and I appreciate that, because every time it's said, it's very well-taken. You know, I, I'm very, again, I live and breathe this, this is, I don't take this lightheartedly, so. And it is, it's my kids' future, too, so. And, and I think you can teach, what I love that I've been learning from clients there, or customers, is that when they come in and they're proud to be like, hey, so we bought this seed, look at what my harvest was from your seed to ours, and teaching people that it doesn't have to be my three-hundred-acre farm, right? It can be a box. I mean, I am teaching people to be able to farm in whatever setting they're in. It doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be our big farm, right? So, like, it's, 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 okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let me sit down now, Steve's probably like, oh my gosh, stop her talking.
Well, I gotta tell you, I moved here in seventy-three with my family from Provo, and Saco's was here.
Right.
And we have shopped it ever since.
Yeah.
And there's a different feeling.
Oh, there is.
Of that shop versus going to big stores, right, the grocery stores. Love that feeling.
Right.
Grateful that you salvaged that, you kept that within our community, and gave us that opportunity to fill that, because there is a big difference, so. Thank you for all your efforts, and it does look great, and I'm sorry for all your problems.
Well, it's fine, I mean, here's the thing, you take a nineteen sixty-nine model and you start pumping her full of, like, you know, I don't know, maybe like tattoos and hair extensions, she's gonna fall apart at some point, right? Like, that's what I feel like with her.
Absolutely.
Like, well, you know, like, she went through a lot of, like, what she needed to, to change, right? So, like, it was just inevitable, and it's gonna be fine. And now the good news is, I have a new roof, and I have all the, everything's been redone. So the good news of the whole thing, it's been redone. Now if I can just keep people coming, which I believe this is going to solidify that, right? Like, it's gonna be harder in the winter, but we know that, like, but I was telling one of the farmers that we pick up our black diamond watermelons from, and he goes, that's your key. He goes, like, your niche has always been Saco's, but you know, like, you can go to Walmart and buy your groceries. Teaching them really, truly that this, and, and there's something about taste. So I've been running the farmer's markets in Ogden, like, one a week, or one a month. And this is why they work, the reason why they work, because they're allowed to taste, feel, touch, smell, right? Well, with USDA in my shop, I can't do that. I, and I can't do it, because I don't have the capacity to do it within the rules, right? And I don't want to get shut down, so the only way for me to make that truly be what farmer's market style is, is this. It allows me to have the kitchen. And then sell it when I run away.
It's a great vision, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if I need to say much more.
Do we want to go right to a motion then?
Yeah, well, I mean, again, the extension, the green areas, green areas is really that unimproved portion. People are parking on which they shouldn't be, and this will kind of help eliminate some of that, and it just improves the site, I mean, she's not changing anything to the south, she's changing a little bit to the north, kind of moving the shed- I mean, she's not changing anything to the south, she's changing a little bit to the north, kind of moving the, the shed to the corner, moving the dumpster a little bit so she can add a couple parking stalls. Just the zoning ordinance requires, you know, nothing within fifteen feet of the setbacks and that's kind of the best place for the detention pond or retention pond, whatever happens to be. Then she's got some picnic tables there that you can go sit on. So, you know, staff would recommend approval. Now, it's a conditional use permit because everything should be inside the, the building except for, you can have stuff if it's part of the existing business. So by her taking it from her shop and cooking it into the, the, the food truck, to me is just an extension of the building, so it meets the criteria. Our criteria is very limited on what can be done and this meets every aspect of it, so. You know, having a food truck that's semi-permanent, you know, that's, that's hers or two others that come in, you know, I don't see the difference, so. Staff would recommend approval for the conditional use and the changes to the site.
Not knowing we're gonna see this, so our food truck ordinance, she is aligned with the requirements, regulations of food.
Yes, because the state does require every city to allow a food truck to be in any zone that a restaurant's allowed to be in.
Right. Okay. Good.
So, that's why the second food truck, you know, do I, do I care what it, if it's tacos or spaghetti or corn dogs or whatever, you know? It, it's great to know that one of them could be just an extension of her, her business in a truck that she can cook stuff and, so.
Well, semi, when she says semi-permanent, I'm thinking.
It'll probably just be parked there for.
Off the wheels, blocked up.
No.
Are we talking about it? So you can move it if you need to.
If I need money, I can sell a food truck. Right, right now, like, I have to sell the whole business if I, like, but this would be an extension of, if I can't make this work.
Come on up to the microphone.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just ask questions. No.
The whole point is that, like, financially, right?
Sure.
To a food truck is that I can get rid of it if I need to. So it's the only way I can do it without adding on to that building of me getting a kitchen, because I don't want to add any more. This building has nearly killed me. I need to, something fresh.
Right.
Have new, new mojo. We bring in a cute little food truck and then I sell it if I need to. So, if it doesn't financially make sense, I can get rid of it.
Sure. Am I on a question, just that we were in compliance with, with the city ordinance?
No, I'm not going to bring in, like, I looked at, like, a snowshack or whatever, they just, that's not an extension of what I do.
No.
It's not, it's just, that's not the point. The point is truly to stay with my business plan from one and a half years ago of making it be that they can come. Because if I start really cooking those bombs and stuff like that, which, you know, the USDA's made me go and get a prep food, anyway who. So I can actually prep food now. I don't have anywhere to prep food, even though they made me get that, but I can.
Yes.
So.
I don't know, I've seen other fruit stands north of us that've had.
I know.
Similar success of food trucks and stuff, yeah.
And that's one of the reasons, and they don't have a commercial kitchen either, but they're cooking their own food. So I'm trying to do it the right way.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Sure we do.
It's a lot of work to do it the right way, because I, and I'm not real good at rules, so just so you know, you can ask him. I'm more like guidelines.
You, you do pretty good with the rules for this one.
I know, I'm trying, I'm trying.
All right.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thanks.
So there'll be two motions.
Okay.
Conditional use will be first and then site plan second.
Okay, so do we have a motion for conditional use approval?
I make a motion that we approve the conditional use for outdoor sales for food truck area at Saco's Farm located at sixty fifty south nineteen hundred west.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So moved.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion for, for a site plan approval for outdoor sales for Saco's Farm?
Move that we approve the site plan for the food truck area for Saco's Farm located approximately sixty fifty south nineteen hundred west.
Okay, we have a motion for site plan approval. Do we have a second?
All seconded.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Appreciate you guys. I promise I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Take care.
History's proven you will.
Agenda item number eight, commissioner's minute. Anybody have anything on their mind? Okay, Steve, agenda item number nine, staff update.
First and foremost, I want to apologize for the, the packet. What had happened is we, every city has to comply with federal statutes on Microsoft Outlook. It has to be a governmental one, so there's more restrictions and, and stuff in it. So in that, I recreated the planning commission group, but with this change, it created it as an email address. So when I, you know, typed in planning commission and it comes up, I just clicked on it, hit send and.
Believe that it went.
Believe that it went, because with the development review committee, created it the same way and they seemed to get it. Now granted, they're in the system and you guys are exterior, so I will double check to see why, how come, what for. And you'll, you'll start getting them more often. So I apologized for that, it was just, I put it together thinking, oh, it worked for one, why wouldn't it work for this one? Because before I could click on, you know, planning commission, open it up and I could see exactly who it was going to, this one just comes back and just says, me. And that was it.
And nobody else.
I'm not sure, but okay.
You know, we've already had commissioner's minute.
It's a, it's a new trick, Steve.
Yeah, so we gotta learn what it is, but.
New trick, yeah.
Just, just so you know, we've been having difficulties receiving emails. Our, our engineer has sent me stuff and I'm like, I'm not receiving whatever it is you're sending. So we've had to backtrack and figure out how to get his emails to come into, to me, so we will figure this out and he will get the packet from here on out, so I apologize for that.
No problem.
No worries.
Oh. And if I was here yesterday or today, because I am technically on vacation.
Yes, I heard.
I'd have gotten it and sent it to you, but can't you tell I'm on vacation? I'm just a figment of your imagination.
I came and talked to Tammy and she told me right up front, she's not in charge of sending the agenda.
Nope, not a big deal.
Anything else, Steve? I don't.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any opposed? Or all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Right.
Who seconded it?
Meeting adjourned.
Who seconded it?
I got water.
Who seconded the motion, okay?
Jason.
Apparently I need to bring a bottle of water.
Have a good night. Did good?
You did, did good until the end.
Appreciate all your help.
How apologies for my copying?
Like you can do anything about it.
Well, I actually, yeah, I've been copying for a while and I thought I was over it, but apparently. So, embarrassing, but I'm.
Yeah. Long as it sounds worse than it is.
No choice.
I got a sinus infection.
Oh no.
So I got a cold, everybody else in the family got it, I'm totally fine.
Apparently, they just thought we were doing it.